Good evening. Welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I call this regular meeting of the City Planning Commission to order. Before we get started tonight, I'm going to introduce one of our commissioners, Sean Irwin, to visit with you folks regarding a little idea the commission and staff has. And having said that, Sean, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Kenny. The planning commission's been talking a little bit over the last few days about a concept of starting to feature a project, a past project that we're pretty happy with the results, and we've heard a lot of positive things from the community. And one such project that we'd like to highlight for this week is the Walgreens store and pharmacy at Minnesota and 26th, and we'll show a few slides of that particular project. What we've tried to do here is the planning commission has been focused on making sure the minimum standards are met, and that's what planning commission is in charge of doing. That is a bar that is set relatively low to meet those kinds of standards. And what we want to do with this presentation is recognize projects that have not just barely cleared the bar, but really done something special that has really made a difference for the neighborhood they reside in. This is one particular project that's done exactly that. It encouraged the owners to extend beyond that minimum rate and do standards that are above and beyond and really recognize what the, a new development can do for a neighborhood, and really be an excellent neighbor for those existing neighbors they're moving into next to. It is an understanding and responsiveness to the surroundings that it is landing within, and respect to neighbors and the desires of those neighbors, and some of the things that they want to see happen in their community. And that's really important to the commission, and it's really important to the community that we recognize those kinds of efforts. And ultimately, this is one project that found a solution that raised that bar for the neighborhood and really did something pretty special. And now that it's been there for a number of years, we've heard nothing but positive comments about a project that initially had quite a bit of controversy behind it. So that's really what the purpose of this presentation is about. Thanks.
Sean, thank you. Very well said. And we're going to do this on a monthly basis. We're going to select some projects in our city that maybe had a little controversy that ended up getting done and done quite well. So we'll make that a regular feature for a while and see how that works. Thank you, Sean.
Great. Thank you.
I would now like to move on to the consent agenda items.
Mr. Chair, I'll be stepping down from the consent agenda.
All right.
I will have to do the same. One particular item in there I have to recuse myself from.
Very good. You guys will sit out in the audience then. Denise will read the consent agenda items, and Steve will do an overhead. If Denise goes a little slow with that, it's so everybody can kind of follow on the overhead just a little bit. But having said that, Denise, if you'd be good enough to read us the consent agenda items this evening?
Yes. Item one is approval of the September 4th, 2013 minutes of regular meeting. Item two is Platts. Item three, 2013-09-01 rezone C4, planned commercial district to the RC Recreation Conservation District for allowed uses located at the northeast corner of West 60th Street North and North Marion Road. Item four, 2013-09-03 rezone from O Office District and RS2 Residential District to RC Recreation Conservation District for allowed uses located north of East 10th Street and east of North Six Mile Road. Item five, 2013-09-05 rezone from AG Agricultural District to the RD Residential District for allowed uses located north of West 41st Street and west of South Ellis Road. Item six, 2013-09-15 rezone from RS1 Residential District to the S Institutional District, RS2 Residential District, and RC Recreation Conservation Districts for allowed uses located a half-mile west of North Marion Road on West Maple Street. Item seven, 2013-09-04 major amendment in subarea H of Rolling Heights Planned Development District to allow off-sale alcohol, on-sale alcohol, and medical office to allowed uses located at the northwest corner of West 69th Street and southwestern Avenue. Item eight, 2013-09-07 major amendment in subareas A and B of Village at Sycamore and 57th Street Planned Development District to change subarea boundaries located at the southwest corner of East 57th Street and South Sycamore Avenue. Item nine, 2013-05-06 conditional use permit in C3 Central Business District to allow housing units on first floor located at the northeast corner of West 11th Street and South Minnesota Avenue. Item 10, 2013-09-08 conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle display and sales located at 1609 West First Street. Item 11, 2013-09-14 conditional use permit in the C4 Planned Commercial District to allow an on-sale establishment located at 815 South Marion Road. Item 12, 2013-06-08 final development plan in subarea C of the Lundstrom's Planned Development District to construct in addition to the existing assisted living facility located at 3408 West Ralph Rogers Road. Item 13, 2013-09-09 final development plan in subarea A of the Wings Planned Development District to construct an indoor recreation facility located at the northwest corner of East 69th Street and South Bonson Avenue. Item 14, 2013-09-11 final development plan in subarea A of the Sanford Sports Complex Planned Development District to construct an indoor recreation facility located south of West 51st Street North and east of North Bobbala Avenue. Item 15, 2013-09-13 final development plan in subarea A of the Sanford Sports Complex Planned Development District to construct an indoor recreation facility located at the southeast corner of West 54th Street North and North Bobbala Avenue.
Denise, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would have any objections to any of the consent agenda items that we've read off this evening? If not, I would ask my fellow commissioners, are there any objection from any of the commissioners regarding the consent agenda items? Seeing none, Chair would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda items.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? The consent agenda items are approved. If you were here for a consent agenda item, you're free to leave.
Welcome back.
Is there a motion to approve the regular agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion to approve the regular agenda passes. Denise, if you would read the first item.
Item 16, 2013-09-06 conditional use permit in the C4 Planned Commercial District to allow motor vehicle sales, display, service, and repair located at 909 West 41st Street.
Good evening. My name is Steve Randall. I'll be representing planning staff on this and another item this evening. The applicant is Village Automotive, currently a property owner represented by Ron Nelson. The applicant is requesting approval on this to lease the subject property to repair motor vehicles and also for the sales of motor vehicles. They're not proposing to change anything on the property. They might do something with the signage, but otherwise landscaping, paving, building, location setbacks, everything stays the same. We have a compatibility rating of three to the south, and that's indicated because future residential development is planned to the south as part of a new building complex. We haven't seen the plans on that yet, but it has been approved through a rezoning, and there is a concept for future development there. There is a requirement for screening of the parking lot from residential uses. However, since the residential uses are not there yet, and we don't know the nature of those, staff is not recommending any improvements at this time. As far as the parking requirements go, nine cars are indicated for display along West 41st Street, and there are 18 parking spots indicated along the west property line for customer and service parking. Only 16 parking spaces are required on the property based on the zoning and the building size. So there is enough parking there. The fire department comment, of course, is that with repair, and if they are going to do any painting, they will require a permit and have to meet the code requirements for fire safety. The proposed land use is appropriate for commercial uses. Continuation, residential apartments are planned for the vacant property south, and staff is recommending approval based on what has been presented in the application. For information to the audience, this is a conditional use permit, which is allowed in the zoning district. There are certain building and code and zoning requirements that will be looked at in a plan check when they come in for a change in use occupancy on the property, and there is an appeal process available. I understand that there is some comment coming from an adjacent property owner this evening, and they will be given the opportunity to speak.
Planning Commission action.
Steve, would there be any questions for Steve regarding this item? Steve, I would have one. As you were given your presentation, you talked about if there was residential to the south, screening would be required. Though it's zoned that, there isn't anything there yet. As that develops, will screening then become an obligation for this particular property?
Not unless there's another change in use.
Unless there's another change in use.
Unless you...
No, I wasn't sure. You kind of said it this time, and it made me think, well, is that something that he might have to do later?
Right.
But that would not be the case.
Because it is a high-density situation, and the preliminary subdivision plan indicates a road at that location, staff is inclined to think that there is enough separation and buffer going on that additional requirements are not necessary. However, you could ask the applicant, and if the adjacent property owner is here this evening, you could also ask them if they feel it's important.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. Any other questions for Steve? Seeing none, is the applicant here?
My name is Dave Heald. I'm the owner of Village Automotive.
Anything you'd care to add, Dave, to the presentation Steve just gave?
I don't think so. The, I know there's a fence across the back of the property, and it has been said that I might have to put a screening fence there. I don't have a problem doing that, but right now, from the old tank farm that was there, there's an old barbed wire fence that's kind of fallen apart that was part of that tank farm fencing, and that would have to be removed before I could put a fence up. But if I need to put a fence up or some trees up, I don't have a problem doing that. So at this point, nobody's told me what I need to do because I think it's too much up in the air, but I don't have a problem doing what has to be done there.
So the fence is there right now as a barbed wire fence?
A barbed wire fence, and it kind of hangs over the existing property.
Commissioners, any questions for David? Everybody's in a good mood tonight, David.
Well, that's good. That's good.
Is there anyone else? You may sit down.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to address item number 16? Yes, sir?
My name is Carlton Klout, and I am the owner of the property that's immediately to the west of that, Dakota Plaza. If I go back to that slide, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. The reason I'm here is we have a, I have a concern with the addition of a number of vehicles which might create an overflow parking issue into my, my properties to the west there. And we also have a concern of maybe the type of vehicles that could potentially be sold because it is my understanding that if any builders granted the right to sell cars, they can sell any type of cars. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, would you say that?
Does it allow that they can sell any type of cars they want? And once they're granted the permission to sell cars, there's no restriction, correct, on the type of vehicles they can sell?
That's correct.
Thank you. So we have the tenants, and I have expressed, are expressing concern on the type of vehicles that could be sold, and we'd be concerned with the number of vehicles because of that whole vehicle. We're also, we believe that the rule is if they are allowed to sell cars, they could potentially sell one car per slot they have. This is the first that we're aware that they would be limited to nine. Is that correct? Are they limited to nine?
Keep that thought. If staff, if you remember these questions, if you can come back up and address them for Carlton, maybe we can answer some of those for you.
I don't believe we'd be concerned if it was a total of nine. It was our understanding that they could sell up to X number of spots they have. Then that creates an issue that when the customers come in for Village Automotive, where do they park? And that creates that borrow some of your spots syndrome. That's what we don't want to get to. The other thing we don't want to get into is the type of vehicles. We don't want commercial vehicles sold, you know, an old ambulance, dump truck, 84 Yugo. Okay, so to degrade the neighborhood, we like late-mile cars sold. That's our concerns.
Any questions for Carlton?
We'll bring Steve back up to ask, answer your question on display, or we could maybe even have Dave come back on that. Really, as it relates to this body, we're a land use, and we will make a decision as to whether it makes sense to have this zoning on this particular piece of property, but there is nowhere in our ordinance that we can regulate what type of vehicle is sold there. That's up to the business owner, just as what you sell or who you rent to in your buildings is really up to you. The same is true with him as a tenant in that facility. So we, we make our decisions based on land use, and is that the right land use at that location? And that's what will be our overriding decision-making going forward tonight.
Thank you.
Carlton, you've got the building right to the west, and what I think I hear is your concern is, is this lot going to be so full that people are going to use your lot to go to his business?
Correct. I have one of my tenants here that will speak to that concern. He's the immediate tenant to the immediate west of there.
All right.
Who has history with the previous business at that location, which was Big O Tires, which ran a similar thing but without the car sales, without sales. They ran a similar thing, but this will be the additional use now with car sales.
What type of separation? It's hard to tell from the picture, do you have between your building and your...
You can't drive through there. There is a curb line there, so you can't go across east-west. There's some rock there, so there's no way for cars to go across there.
Okay. Specifically, your question then after that is, how many vehicles can he have there?
Yeah, specifically, if it, if it's nine, I don't believe we have a concern with the limit of, if there's an actual limit, or is it, once you give him permission, can he sell, you know, 30?
I'm pretty sure there's a limit, but I, I want to have the experts kind of...
That's a question we have.
Okay. Any other question?
No.
All right, young fellow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, would you like to tackle that right now before we bring somebody else up?
Sure. As far as the number of vehicles available to sell, there is no limit. Recently, the ordinance changed to allow any and all parking spots on the commercial property to be available for display and sales. It used to be that you had to provide additional parking for display and sales to what's required by the ordinance. That's no longer the case.
And so we've got how many parking spots here?
Here, the applicant is proposing nine located along 41st Street for display and for sales. If you wanted to make that the limit, you would have to put that on as a condition for approval as to the location and the number.
There's more than nine parking spaces here. There's quite a few parking spaces along the west side?
Yeah. What they indicated to us, it was nine along 41st Street that would be used for display and sales.
Okay.
As to the, what was the other question? Had to do with the type of vehicles, and I think Jesse answered that quite, quite well. The zoning ordinance does not restrict the type of vehicles. It just says motor vehicles.
In other words, every car lot in town has that ability to sell an automobile regardless of the age or condition? Okay.
The applicant maybe could address that better than I did.
We might call him back up when we get done, but we'll see. Was there someone else here that wanted to speak to this particular issue?
Gentlemen, ladies, my name is Bill Sheppeler. I own the Goodfeet Store, which is immediately to the west of Village Automotive. I've been there, this is our eighth year, and when the previous tenant was there and doing well, they had pretty much every slot full, the vehicles they'd pull out that they'd fixed, new vehicles ready to run back in and work on. If they, if these gentlemen, and I hope they do well servicing cars, if they get that kind of business going, they're going to need, I would assume, the same number of spots. And if they fill those up with used cars, that's going to bring more retail people in to want to park and look at their used cars in addition to the vehicles they're working on, and plus the, the employees' parking of five, probably six spots. When that happened in the old days, when business was really good everywhere, people would pull up in front of my store and park and run right over. And so I'd start losing parking spots, and it would press all the way down. I'd love for all the pots to be full again, but I'd still like my customers, who obviously if they're coming into an art support store, they can't walk very well. I'd like them to be able to kind of get into the front door. So that's, that's my big concern. The other one is, obviously, the type of vehicles. Kind of has a, an effect on the ambiance of the whole area, but I'd be happy with, with parking.
Bill, before you sit down, would any commissioners have any questions for Bill?
Bill, with a conditional use permit, those come up for review a year after it's been in place. And if there's, if I'm saying anything out of turn, go ahead and speak up. So if you should encounter the parking issues that you're talking to us about, certainly we would want you to bring that to the city's code enforcement attention, and we could certainly discuss that upon the review of the conditional use permit.
Does that come up just once or annually?
It comes up, I think typically, once unless there continues to be a problem, and then it can be brought back, is my understanding. And we'll get clarification from city staff for that as well.
Thank you. Was there anyone else here that wanted to address item 16? If not, if I can take it upon myself to call the applicant back up, give him a chance to respond to a couple of your couldn't-be-neighbors' concerns. First off, could you explain to me just what exactly your business is? Is it car repair?
It's automotive repair, and we work on any kind of vehicle made in the world, do virtually any type of auto repair. The car sales is an add-on. It complements our business. It is not my main business. We don't do commercial vehicles. We don't do old dump trucks. Village Automotive's been in town. We're in our 21st year. We're A-plus rated with the Better Business Bureau. We play well with others, always have. We were over in Foley's parking lot for a while, and he was concerned, you know, what are you going to have out in your parking lot? Because before we were there, it was Sioux Falls Tire, and they had a lot of rough stuff out in that parking lot. And we don't keep junk around. I try to keep a professional image. And it's interesting, they say people using his lot, every Saturday, we sit there and say, how many do you think will come in today that park in my lot and walk into the Goodfeet Store? And I said, at some point, when it gets busy, we're going to have to address that. But...
I think you and he need to get to shake hands, meet each other, and see if you can...
Well, I think so too. I think so too. And I don't want junk sitting around. We try not to do that. That pitcher's got oil all over the back parking lot there. That's all been cleaned up. You know, we keep the trash in the containers, and nine would be the most I'd ever have out on car sales. Usually, it's five or six.
If there was a stipulation to this, saying that it was limited to nine cars along 41st...
Oh, I would, I'd have no problem with that. That's not my main business. My main business is fixing cars.
Sounds like the neighbors wouldn't have a problem with that either.
Okay.
How many, can I ask how many employees you have? I mean, you've got to provide parking for employees.
There's four of us there.
So you've got all the parking along the west side, four, which would certainly, I think, leave you enough room to run the cars in and out.
Oh, yeah. We, we were required to have 16 spots. We've got 18, plus you've got six stalls in the building. So we've got more than is required, and, you know, if that becomes an issue, we'll have to figure out what we're going to do if I need to take a couple of used cars out of there. But, you know, a lot of the stuff that we do is, you know, we don't stack up cars like that. Big O that was in there before, he told me he was doing about 120 tire rotates and, tire repairs a week. You've got 120 people coming in for tire repairs in a week, that's a lot of stalls taken up. And we're more of a repair than a tire store, so most of our customers drop a car off, and we don't have the issue like they do where there's 15 people waiting at one time.
Thank you. That's answered a couple of thoughts in my mind.
Okay.
Maybe somebody else has got a question for you, Dave. Hang on just a second. Does anybody else have a question for Dave? Seeing none? Thank you. Was there anyone else here that wanted to address item number 16? If not, Chair would entertain a motion on item number 16.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 16.
We have a motion to approve. Would there be a second? This would be time for discussion. I think what I'd like to lay on the table is how everybody might feel about a stipulation of nine cars along 41st Street.
Mr. Chair, I guess I would not be in favor of a stipulation that would limit the number of spaces for him to sell cars. It'd be like going to Walmart and saying they can only have 12 TVs in their store, and you can't have any more, and that seems to be, at least to me, something that we shouldn't do.
Anybody else have any thoughts regarding that?
I would tend to agree with Nick on that. I think Dave intends to be a good neighbor, and like I say, the conditional use process allows for some feedback if there's any issues with code enforcement. So I think there's opportunity, should the need arise, to address it, but I don't think at this time it's probably needed.
Should we have any concern about fencing down the road if there would, was to be residential development behind this building?
I think, Mr. Chairman, we should probably cross that bridge when we get to it, in my opinion.
I don't think we'll be able to come back to Dave with it.
No, but it's a new issue at a different time, in my opinion.
I think staff did mention that they felt from the plan they've looked at, that it looked like there was kind of a good break between that boundary and, although the plans can change, but I guess the developer will have to deal with that when they get to that point. Does anyone else have any comments regarding item number 16?
No, I'm glad we're going to get that space on 41st Street.
Well, I think it's a good location. I think Big O certainly did a lot of business. I think when, well... I think when, well, if, if we're done with discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor will signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Dave, if you'd like to, there's a waiting area. If you'd like to go out and meet, meet your neighbors, have a little conversation with them, I think that'd go a long ways. Thank you, fellas.
Thank you for listening.
You bet. Denise, item number seventeen.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes, sir.
I need to recuse myself from this item as well.
All right, Sean.
Item seventeen, 2013-09-02, minor amendment in sub-area A of the Sanford Medical Center Plan Development District to construct a skywalk in the required front yard setback located at West Nineteenth Street and South Grange Avenue.
Jason Bieber with the Sioux Falls Planning Office. This is, the applicant is Bob Winkles for Sanford Health, and the request is a minor amendment in sub-area A to construct a skywalk running through the front yard setback across Grange Avenue. It's located on West Nineteenth Street and South Grange Avenue. The applicant is proposing to construct a ten-foot wide by two-hundred-and-forty-one-foot-long skywalk from the proposed Home Two Hotel on the east, then west across South, South Grange Avenue, and finally connecting into the existing Sanford Heart Hospital. The skywalk will be seventeen-point-eight feet above South Grange Avenue, and it will travel through the front yard setbacks on both the east and west sides of Grange Avenue. The Sanford USD Medical Center Plan Development District was approved in February of nineteen ninety-three, with the Heart Hospital Final Development Plan approved in two thousand nine, and then the Home Two Hotel on the east side was just approved in August of two thousand thirteen. The proposed skywalk will provide a safe and effective pedestrian access from the proposed hotel to the existing Sanford Heart Hospital. Further, the skywalk will meet the minimum height requirements above South Grange Avenue. Finally, the, the skywalk will travel through and above the required front yard setback on the east and west sides of South Grange Avenue. Because the skywalk meets the minimum height distance above South Grange Avenue and will provide a safe and effective pedestrian access from the hotel to the Heart Hospital, staff recommends approval of the minor amendment. And this is a minor amendment application to a plan development district. Minor amendments, our changes to initial or final development plans, and minor amendments are approved by the Planning Commission and are final. And I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you. Would there be any questions for Jason regarding item number seventeen? Seeing none, Jason, thank you. Would the applicant be here this evening?
Good evening. Orland Cheddar, Vice President, Facilities and Planning at Sanford Health. I would point out that Mr. Winkles, who signed the application, is vacationing in Alaska.
I was going to say, you didn't look like Bob does.
We can perhaps think about that and wish that we were there, or he was here, one of the two. At any rate, I think Mr. Bieber was very clear in describing this project. What you see on the screen certainly demonstrates our intent for this to be a structure that adds to the beauty and the function of our campus. I heard Mr. Bieber mention the word safety, obviously, with people traversing across a busy street like Grange Avenue. We're concerned about that. We had talked about the possibility of tunnels. We have tunnels elsewhere on our campus that go under some streets. In this particular case, and I'm not the engineer, but I understand that the utilities and some of the structures underground are prohibitive for us to do that. So, this option for us, we believe, is most appropriate. Will meet those needs of safety and security for people crossing the street from this new hotel, and we're very excited about the project. Be happy to take questions.
Warren, thank you. Would there be any questions for fellow commissioners?
OT, just one, quick one. Is there access from, is it the access only from the hotel and the hospital, or can you get there from the street corners as well?
At this point, the access is designed somewhat by what the hotel would like it to be, coming into their hotel in order to access the skywalk. Part of this is, the structure is being designed so that we can, at some future point, should we see the need or the, have the desire to do so, that we can put an external, outside of the hotel, entrance to the skywalk on the hotel side of the street, or the east side of the street.
Okay. Thank you. Warren, just out of curiosity, is this tunnel enclosed? Is this all an enclosed tunnel?
Yes. This is completely enclosed and will be temperature-controlled year-round. It'll be heated and cooled both. It, it's a remarkable structure. I think that our thoughts about this come kind of from the Minneapolis area, where you see skywalks connecting downtown buildings. And of course, right here in Sioux Falls, we have the similar thing downtown, where we have a structure crossing the street. But yes, it's completely enclosed and weather-tight.
Thank you. Any other questions for Warren? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else here this evening that wanted to address item number seventeen? If not, Chair would entertain a motion regarding item number seventeen.
I move approval of item seventeen. Mr. Chair?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second discussion?
Sure, there's going to be lots of people in the winter that are excited. That's out there.
Definitely.
Well, I certainly like the, the safety aspect, and it looks like, from the drawing, the elevation study, it's going to be very much like some of the other buildings that are on the campus already. I think it'll be a good addition.
Thank you, fellas. Anyone else? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed? Item number seventeen passes. Denise, what have we got, item number eighteen?
It's a 2013-09-10 minor amendment in sub-area A of the Wings Plan Development District for a reduction in parking requirements for an indoor recreation facility located at East Sixty-ninth Street and South Bonson Avenue.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this is the Wings Gymnastics Academy that's proposed for construction on the subject property. It's an allowed use, and we did approve a final development plan as part of the consent agenda. What we're looking at now is a request to reduce the parking requirements appropriate to the use that's proposed. Indicated on the site plan is a vacant portion of the property north of the building for which the use has not been identified yet, but staff looks at that as a possible future expansion of either parking or building or both. Parking requirements for a commercial recreation facility are quite high, based on the city's zoning ordinance. There is a new forty-five-stall parking lot proposed in the south of the building. However, a hundred and eight parking spaces are required for general recreational use. This is not general recreational use. It's an academy. It's educational. It's a classroom kind of setting, and staff is proposing that the forty-five-stall parking lot is, is okay for that use. Forty-five parking stalls, based on the square footage of the building, would be one stall for every two-hundred-and-forty square feet. If you take the normal zoning ordinance for a office or commercial use, it would be one for three-hundred square feet. So, they actually exceed the normal parking requirements for a standard use in that other zoning district. Submitted plans are complete. For your consideration, a complete plan checked by zoning and building services is required before a building permit can be obtained. Staff is recommending approval of the request, and we've had no calls. For the audience information, and there's no audience yet, so we'll speak to the audience at home. This is a minor amendment, which is required when we change the standards or regulations for our use in a planned development district. The Planning Commission action is final, and there is no appeal.
Would there be any questions for Steve? Steve, a question in my mind, we're going from one-oh-eight required to forty-five, and I understand how you feel comfortable while you're doing it. That's quite a reduction. I can't help but think of the two items earlier where we've got two people side by side going, gee, the neighbor's using my parking lot. What if there'd be a change of use on this? Right now, it's going to be an academy. It's going to be a gymnasium. And let's say, for whatever reasons, they retire, they want to sell the building, and something else goes in there. Could we be creating a, how am I trying to say this? I mean, could we be creating an issue on a change of use? Would they have to come back to us with a change of use?
For a change in use, this is a planned development district where the uses that are allowed are very specific to gymnastics and to the classroom and the educational and the office use. Office use would certainly be allowed, and as I mentioned, the office parking calculations for the same-size building would apply.
So, if it was changed to an office, we'd be okay?
Yeah. If they wanted to change it to a higher use that would require more parking, chances are, you'd have to consider that as a major amendment in the planned development district, and you would consider the parking regulations at that time.
What I have seen happen on PDs is, after it develops out, the city comes back to change the TVs, the PDs to the zoning that it's being used for. Would that zoning be considered office zoning, or would that be more of a commercial nature? And I mean it, and I agree, if there was a change of usage in a PD, yes, we start over again. But if the PD goes away, the question in my mind is, what zoning then is put on it?
If the PD goes away, maybe we're talking about a higher use being commercial, in which case, we would still meet the parking requirements.
You would.
Because commercial would be one to three-hundred, and we're at one to two-forty. If it was a multi-tenant facility, though, you would have to increase the parking on there, because that would be one to two-hundred, and we're only providing one to two-forty. However, as I mentioned, there is this additional site available on the north side of the building, which the use has not been identified yet. And certainly, in the negotiation for a change in use, they could include that in their parking requirements.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions for Steve?
No, I just have a statement. I think that, as we have looked at what our potential zoning changes can be and what we'd like to see, I think it allows for some flexibility. And I think clearly, to require a hundred and eight parking spaces for this proposed use is overkill. It's a lot of money to put in surface parking, and, and quite frankly, I don't think it's necessary. And if you look, it's a classic case of two major arterials coming together, and if it's zoned o-office, it's fine. If it's zoned commercial, it's fine. So, I think it just goes to say that we need some more flexibility in our zoning codes as to how we interpret this going forward.
And I think if it would become a multi-tenant, then they'd have issues, I think, down at permitting, you know, as far as the codes, zoning codes.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Steve? Is the applicant here? I'm dying to find out if they're going to have tournaments there.
Are you going to enroll?
Probably not going to be able to answer that question. Paul Reynolds, RCM Services, sixty-eight oh-nine, South Minnesota Avenue. The property that Steve mentioned that's on the backside is, right now, that's a vacant piece. We've gone through the process with them on a design plan for their gymnastics facility, on what they want to have in it, how many students they want to have in there. That's how the space was designed. The parcel of property does allow for growth or something that could happen on the backside of that right now, but right now, that's not the intent that they have.
Paul, I just want to be sure that the petitioner understands, if there were to be a change of usage, it sounds like forty-five would meet office. Sounds like it'd meet commercial. Be a one-tenant type of deal. Is, are you representing the owner, or are you the owner?
We're the petitioner. We signed it up for the owner, on behalf of the owner, yes.
They talk about another piece of ground. They don't own that piece of ground, I think.
There, if you talk, there's a little section of land that they own on their same parcel that is behind the building. You take a look at the backside, on the upper side of the plan, right there, that parcel, they own that as well.
Okay.
The original intent that the developer had, the land developer had out there, this was going to be for residential lots. And then there was this opportunity that arose, and it's a great location for a gymnastics facility, new school system going in, new residential development out there. They're looking forward to it.
Is this gymnastics from little kids up to my age?
Little kids, mainly little kids. When you go to their facility right now, it's a lot of yelling and jumping around, and a lot of young kids having a lot of fun. But it's mainly for youth, yes, not, not for older kids.
They feel comfortable with the forty-five will suit their needs.
Actually, what they have right now in their class sizes that they have, their current location that they are at right now is over on southeastern. They estimate that they have maybe ten to fifteen parents that would stay during their classes. So, yes, this easily meets their requirements.
Very good. Thank you, Paul. Did anyone else have any questions for Paul? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else here that wanted to address item number eighteen?
Who else left?
Seeing none, Chair would entertain a motion on item eighteen.
Do Chair move for approval?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think you handled it, Kenny.
All in favor will signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed? Congratulations. Paul, eighteen is approved.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? We are adjourned.